Yes, sir. Can you get the... Please, Mr. President? I'm recording the morning.
Okay, go ahead. Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, December 21st. Our current time is 9:00 a.m. And I want to surprise my fellow commissioners here. I mentioned it to you yesterday. We're going to do something before we start this meeting. And would you all please stand with me? We'd like to tell everybody, Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad, Rosado Ano de Felicidad. We want to wish you a Merry Christmas. We want to wish you a Merry Christmas. We want to wish you a Merry Christmas from the bottom of our heart.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Christmas. It's been a while, man. It's been two years since we were to sing for you.
I couldn't switch.
And I throw Tony under the bus here. Good morning and welcome to our work, God of Commissioners, Christmas edition of December 21st, 9:00 a.m. We'll call this meeting or Commissioner Haff. Would you please lead us in the invocation as well?
Heavenly Father, we know that the rest of the plans that you have for us are good. We pray that you will direct each and every one of our steps in line as we pray this by the Holy Spirit in your grace. May all our steps glorify you and may we never doubt the plan that you have for us. Amen.
Amen. Young guys, Ed, would you please lead us in the pleasurable pleas this is wanting?
Litigious to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. What call was it?
Commissioner Hess?
Here.
Commissioner Piesolzis?
Here.
Commissioner Resosis?
I am here. Do you have any changes to the attention?
No, Commissioner, don't leave me.
Entertain motion, please.
Move to our group of the intent that we said this?
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Piesolzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Resosis?
Yes. Item two, consideration of minutes. Special meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2021. We have had an opportunity to review those minutes. If there are any questions or concerns, please do so at this time. If not, entertain a motion, please. Move for a two with the special meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2021.
Second. Commissioner Piesolzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Resosis?
Yes. Item B, special meeting minutes of December 2nd. The same, we've had an opportunity to review. If there are any questions or concerns, please entertain a motion.
December 10th, correct?
I'm sorry, December 10th.
No questions or comments. Uh, move to approve the special meeting minutes for December 10th, 2021.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Piesolzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Resosis?
Yes. Reading of Florida bonds, Commissioner Committee reports. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, a couple of meetings that I had an opportunity to attend in the last couple of weeks. The National Association of Counties held the regular meeting on the immigration reform task force committee. And in it, the conversation pretty much around the, around the Collins and proposed resolution that may be coming out on the NACO legislative meeting that's going to take place in Washington, D.C. in February. So, uh, review of all the actions that we spoke about throughout the fiscal year 2021. And at this point in time, one of the questions that I put on the table for NACO is counties and states, we want to know how many immigrants are coming to our counties, basically to assess the impact financially to our DHSs and otherwise. And at this point in time, the NACO representative is going to be researching that information. Where is the place where we can get that information? And also, uh, who's receiving that information, both at the state and at the county level? The, uh, the impact financially, we don't know how to measure that nationwide, but I know there's probably a little bit of impact on that. So that was the living immigration reform task force meeting. Then we had a really good meeting with the Secretary of Agriculture last week and very interesting meeting with Kate Greenberg and I'm going to, before it's Commissioner Tony Haff, he's the Chair of that particular meeting, to give us a little more in the detail of it. We were honored to have Representative McCormick from Boulder and to hear and understand the impact that Ag could be facing in the event that there is legislation such as that of the pause, the pause initiative by initiative 16 that was presented and attempted to, uh, to make way in the last legislative session. So I'm going to yield that on that particular topic to our Commissioner Tony Haff because it was a very interesting meeting and very engaging. And one of the things that we gave is we're expecting Secretary, Commissioner Greenberg coming to Los Angeles County hopefully in the first of the year. And also we invited Representative McCormick to do the same. Yesterday we had a meeting with the opioid settlement task force, Region 19. And so one of the things that we're talking about at this point in time is what are some of the challenges that we're facing? We're collecting from every county. There's nine counties that are part of this consortium. And what are the challenges that we're facing as counties? And we have heard, somewhat confirmed, that the money is not going to be there until 2023. So we're going to go to 2022 without any funds. Right now we're on the planning session. We have two years to put a plan process in place and, uh, but a couple of good things actually matter about hoping. There are some grants that are coming in from the federal government that we can apply for and begin to create and make a way for, uh, addressing this whole thing that is happening with the opioid pandemic. We spoke a little bit about what is happening in Fresno. And Fresno is actually impacting not only our counties, one of the food dogs, which is kind of a bad food dog, is, is the region that we are sitting on is one of the most impacted regions for opioid usage. So that gives us an opportunity to apply for grants and partner with entities such as, uh, we're looking at DHS, we're looking certainly at, uh, our district attorney, our sheriff, and so many other entities within the county to reach out and create a education and prevention on this opioid perspective. One of the good points that came out of the whole thing is our Chair Wendy Backston-Andrade from Pravers County mentioned President of the Marketing and College was interested in joining with this particular task force. So we're reaching out to Otero Junior College and Trinity State as well to see what can they do as far as and what can we do together to work with and prevent this opioid impact that our counties are having. And last but not least, also the school districts will be taking a huge part in it because we have had, in years past, we have had presentations from the use of opioids and drugs at local schools. So we're hoping that the consortium is going to be taking this information and working with school districts all over the nine counties so we can create information and education around this whole thing. And it was also said that drugs and opioid that has exceeded those of any other elements of the United States and I would imagine Colorado is being impacted at the same level that the national level is. So that's my report. Thank you, Chair. I love you for my time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hess? December 9th, Los Angeles County Housing and litigation Rattler Table 1 was held. Los Angeles County is beginning the first phase of the housing and mitigation plan update. Once the county as a part of an approved plan, we become eligible for up to 75% cost share from federal emergency management funds for a variety of different projects, having to do with emergency management from light fire, severe winter drought, or technical disability. December 15th, I attended the Health Board meeting and Kim Gonzalez was honored, I'm going to defer to the Commissioner that sits on that board as a businessman, to update us on that Health Board meeting. December 20th, Southeast Regional Opioid Board meeting. They asked me to come onto this, on to this board and give my two cents, but with Felix as the Vice Chair of this and, and being kind of on to this board, what, three meetings ago, I am at work in progress, I'm going to tell you, all the arguments is just overwhelming to try to understand what they're talking about a few sentences. I'm learning and hopefully I'll have more to add to that, to that cause later. December 17th, um, at our CCI conference, I asked a question in our Ag Wildlife and Rural Affairs Committee. The question wasn't really a question, it was a statement. To the panel that was, that was present up there at, at this meeting, Terry Frankhouser, Carlisle Purrier, Paul Andrews, Tony Frank from CSU, they were all up there in front of them. And they were all talking about the things that were going to impact Ag in their opinion the most and water being a huge issue, dray, everything else. And at the end of the meeting, I said, I stood up and said, I think one of the, one of the primary things that concerns me with what's happening to Ag and what's going to affect Ag the biggest is the mass exodus of our rural children from, from our ranching of farms. And how can we address that? I was, the question I was asking was, it's, it's becoming really difficult to be able to have our children stay on the farm and ranch with the inheritance tax and all the other issues that, that make it difficult for, for the succession in the farming and ranches. And that's one of the big topics that I wanted to be brought up at this IFB Wildlife and Rural Affairs Committee meeting that we have with Commissioner Kate Greenberg. And she, she was able to address that for us and tell us that there was many opportunities through the USDA and through CVA, Colorado Department Ag and the U.S. Department Ag, and there are grants and scholarships and, and opportunities to help with that succession. So it was good to hear her comments on that and as Commissioner Lopez alluded to, we did have Representative McCormick there. I was made aware that there was probably, probably going to be some pause life legislation introduced by this individual. And I asked Dottie Gervais from the CCI, she couldn't give us a meaningful answer, Representative McCormick, to kind of allude to what was going to be in this bill. And she had already met with several different Ag groups in the days prior to our meeting. So she was pretty briefed on what the concerns were going to be. And she was able to get out there and do this, the update on, on pending legislation. And many of the commissioners that were in attendance, I think number 57 or so were in attendance that day. And all of us had some concerns to her of how that's going to be. We don't need another pause life initiative. We don't need another pause life legislation. And one of the, one of the main concerns that I had was our loss of animal husbandry practices that we have out there on, on the ranches and farms. And I give you an example of Thanksgiving Day of me and my son going out to check the water and finding the propane stop. I drove home, called the vet, asked him if he would be available to perform the procedure. And he said, no, I'm booked for the day. And I won't be able to do anything. Well, we had a calf that was less than two hours old that my son took back to the barn. And we have the calf that had her medical issues. So we took care of that. And because we took care of it and performed the procedure, we have a thriving cow-calf herd. And without those animal husbandry practices, both of those, both of those calves, the calf and the cow would die. So I explained to her how I've heard that that was, that we maintain those animal husbandry practices. And maybe like a true politician, she told us everything we wanted to hear and, and will hold her feet to the fire and hopefully will gain some ground. And maybe it hasn't been introduced yet and we hope that it will. That's my report. Thank you. All right. On December 9th, Council of Governors had their final board meeting for the year. We were able to finalize our budget and balance budget with that coming year and look forward to all of the new things that are going to be happening, especially with our work in our county, AAA program and the senior center that's going to be renovated and modeled. That is, the bid is being taken in the house, getting it started and moving forward with that transit. We'll be expanding in Wofford County for transportation needs and hopefully assist more people into the Llaveeta and the Garden area for transportation needs. We also have interviews for our, for our current director. We have interim director right now. We finalized two candidates, which will be coming back in January for interviews. And at that time tomorrow, we'll select an executive director who will be for the Council of Governors. December 9th, the same day, that evening, I had a tour of board meeting. I was not able to attend, but basically the same thing, they finalized the year-end budget of $240,000. The facade program is going forward for another year, which is available $30,000 in funds for local businesses to apply for the grants to fix their, their outside of buildings. December 15th, we had a board health meeting. Now, I don't know if my chief here sees it and understand it a little better. Board Health and finalized the budget there. The board did want to give their thanks to our administration staff and our Finance Director, Kristi Colby, for assisting or getting the budget portion done for our, our side of Los Angeles County and the additional funds we were able to utilize this year, including the maintenance department for the parking lot as well and the additional dollars amount that were came from the art funds was greatly appreciated. And they said they'd pass it on to Mr. Dorham and Kristi and all of our staff too. Ms. Gonzalez was selected and I can't remember the name of the organization, but it's a, it's a mental health group to start studying mental health and it's only, only 15 out of the entire country that was selected to this camp to start learning and assisting public mental health and public health. So we're going to add an element to our public health department here, bringing in the mental aspect of it, which I think is really needed right now, especially with having opioids and the agriculture and it all, it all comes together, together, out of mental capacity and the health of our community and our children. The drugs, the things they're facing, the opioids, knocking in school is horrible and it's hard on you guys. And so we're going to have that aspect moving forward to look at that. December 20th, yesterday morning, the Otero Partners Incorporated canceled their, their meeting, but their budget is in the final, it's already, so we are good to go. And one last quick thing, January 6th, we will be meeting at Trinity State Junior College with our senators and representatives and our legislators for the community, the state, and international at Trinity State Junior College, January 6th for the first roundtable we've had in a couple of years due to COVID, so it's a forward to that. And I'd like to wish our, our community and our friends, our neighbors, our surrounding towns a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and we'll move forward. And if you have anybody for public comment that is on the call today, so we have three minutes now to see if you can people on the call.
That's correct.
Okay, that's stacked.
And no one has signed up either, Commissioner.
All right. Any other presentations? The Los Angeles County Writing Contest Community Update. Mr. Nemo?
Yes, we have.
Morning, everybody. Do you need a standard of my chair?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Isaiah Murna. I'm in seventh grade and this month I assist Leah, choosing kindergarten. I'd like to thank all of you for your generous contribution to support young writers through the Los Angeles County Writing Contest. I have submitted stories for the contest almost every year since I started kindergarten. I love to express my thoughts to the writing and this is a way that young writers can share the stories with others in our community. My writing last year was titled, "The Moment of Change." "The Moment of Change." December 31st, 2019. This was the day that started a plague. War on China got the first case, then it had to go to Grammer East. Mustful master, then we go to a place, as this is the only way to say this like James Murna. As this is the only beginning of the first movement of this virus go place to place, the virus had struck as if I strike the puck, but no one was a lucky duck. This monkey had taken our loved ones and activities for now. Till we take it over like it was still to show, for this not the last time in town. We must make it till we hit home base so that we could uncover our face. Not only did the Los Angeles County Writing Contest provide us the opportunity to be our source of publish, but offers high school seniors a scholarship to attend Junda State College. I'll continue to show my writing with the community as educational resources. And I'm happy to see how exciting and assisted we have started on my journey. Hello, my name is Leah. I am kindergarten. I am one that's like, I'm a study like a horse. Excited to enter the contest. Thank you, Leah. We would like to thank you all for everything you've supported in our community. We also have a coffee or glasses book speaking to you.
Yes. Just get a picture with you, having us in the book, how's that sound? Stand right here. Under you, right?
Smile.
Wish I could smile. All right. I think I got one of your buttons up here where your chest is down. Yeah. Proud, proud. Thank you. So which one is yours? What page?
So there's four divisions, uh, in kindergarten, second grade, third grade through fifth, sixth through eighth, and then nine through 12 in kind of chronological order. But, um, they did do a, we did do a book now since we kind of reactivated this. And every person's story, their writing story goes into the book, so it's a wonderful thing.
So it's not a page number? He was in sixth grade last year and title?
Very good. Well, you know, this is, want to thank you and keep on writing. And you're impacting this right here, it's going to impact on so many lives. So keep up and it's an honor that to have you here today. So congratulations and thank you so much.
And as a thank you, a couple of years, what we did through all of our sponsors, class, this year we decided as a thank you, we did a calendar and it's the 2022 calendar, has photos of all the winners in each division in there. And we'd like to have a way of present that too. And I will give you your emails. We have a letter.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. And we have a letter that says basically what we're doing as a committee and what the kids are doing and how much participation we've had. Obviously, it's most important for the kids and their writing ability and creativity, but we also bring the community together really well with the college sponsoring that. We've got to pay the sponsors, we've got our grant review, which tremendously helped and we were able to give out scholarships with that money. So not only is it helping with the kids, which is the main thing, but it's bringing all different entities in our community working together for the good of the kids.
I mean, it's so exciting because even though they don't want to publish, they're published and so they, it's so exciting.
Well, speaking of the grant, Kristi will be giving that information. Oh, we'll give it today. So you'll contact her office. We're doing it again this year. So contact Kristi after the first few years and put your application in. And, and I am very proud of this with my daughter because she, her name, many years ago was published as well. So thanks both of you who supported this program so much. And you guys, you have any questions for the Commissioner? No, you sure? It's your time to shine. How about you, Leah?
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, guys. You're so wonderful. Thank you, Mary, you're a philosopher. So what do we want to display this in the, in the office chair of the board?
Very tight. You know, that's pretty, that's pretty tough. Straight to the old day like this. Yeah. Everybody says we're intimidating, so.
She did really good. That's awesome.
It's our character.
Awesome, that's unique, Ken.
She's hiding behind the podium there. Thank you.
All right, moving forward. Thank you. That is, uh, that is something so dear to my heart too, that my daughter is now 16 and she did this 11 year ago, it was a thousand pages. We want to like the officials that are making. Well, we have anybody from the accessories on the call today. I don't see any elected officials on. So I think we will pass that. And all right, some new business. Consideration of IFB number 22001 Waste Disposal Service for 2022. Mr. Dorham?
Commissioner Resosis bids for waste disposal in the county with the following results. This will be on Friday.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I interrupt you for that? Thank you. Good morning. All right, goodbye.
You know, we're going to call this.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the most beautiful thing to see.
What's that?
Thank you so much to see you.
Thank you, I love you guys. Thank you for the beauty that you do for the county.
You have money in here?
Yeah, we can all believe it. It's just an off-dollar fortune.
The following results was any enterprises now seeing new businesses right with disposal, $860 a month, $10,000 through 20 annually, 20 environmental services, no bid, and then there were no other submissions from any other companies. So I ask for more to improve right with disposals bid of $860 a month.
Are you questioning the concern for the workers? Not entertain a motion. Not entertaining motion.
I move to our open here IFB number 252-001 Waste Disposal Services 2022. To rightway disposal in the amount of ten thousand two hundred and twenty dollars for the fiscal year 2022.
Second, that motion. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitty Stolz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee Stolz?
Yes. Consideration of retaining CGRS services for bare ground fuel line compliance, Mr. Burton.
Commissioners, we're required to have our underground fuel lines tested for leaks. This past test, there was a slight leak in one of those fuel lines, our diesel fuel line. The state has certain companies who are certified to do the type of work that we're wanting to do. That is bring those lines above ground, so we don't have to do annual leak detections. And also, if we do have a leak, we can see the leak before we contaminate much of the soil. Although we didn't have a huge contamination on this one. So this is the only type of leak is when it's pumping diesel fuel. And in addition to this, this is a sidebar, but in addition to this, we're going to have that area tested to see that a lot of the contamination of the fat. This year is a company called GC. Our LLC is also the company that works our airport fuel line systems out there in fuel tanks. So we're familiar with their work. This cost estimate is for bringing those lines above ground. As I mentioned, at the price of forty one thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars. How many do they have to bring those lines above ground? But there's a whole gamut of hoops that they'll have to jump through at the state level. State investment for bringing from underground to above ground and all the other materials and all this is required. So that's important. To approve this amount of forty one seven ninety six, we get this work, gotta get that diesel fuel line open back. That was not even a lot of money.
How do, how do they protect an exposure line like that when it's going to be above ground?
We'd end up having to put those jersey barriers, those concrete barriers, so it won't come right into it. We do have, we, part of the line, part of the fuel line system is above ground right now. They come out of the top of the tanks, they drop down into the ground in a sleeve, and they go to where our dispensary is at the basins. And so we do have some of those lines above ground that we do right now. This will actually have that whole lately pipe above ground rather than being underground.
So that's only for the diesel line, not for the?
There should be, that's the vocal lines, we sort of totally want to be done and above ground also.
Okay.
Because our consultant who does the light test says it's a diesel line. Has a leak, it's just a matter of time for it to go. Because they've been underground, I think, for over twenty years, so.
And if there is sleeve, it's hard to identify where the leak is at, right?
That's correct. That's why CGRS gave us an estimate, all fixed in a good place. But they said it's going to be really difficult to tell plus because we're going to start fixing that line. And more than just that area has basically gone through the walls of the pipe. And we're going to have, potentially we'll place a whole line, we should drive it across, see what's supposed to, we're going to bug line, or excuse me, we're going to bug ground and see if we have any issues with the mines and take care of them at those, at that times.
And a period that's under our big management policy amounts, so we are. Did that counselor who had any questions, consider the key document to review the contractor?
I would read it very well.
Any other questions important? Entertaining motion, please. Who for approval of the CGRS services for bare ground fuel line compliance for forty one thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars?
Second motion. Commissioner Kitty Stolz?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee Stolz?
Yes. Item C, consideration of Trinidad Times TV proposal, Mr. Murphy.
Please. Good morning, commissioners and staff. Before we begin, I'll tell you, I've been filming these for sixteen years and done thousands and thousands of hours. And Louise, this morning is probably one of the sweetest things I've seen is me. So God bless you. I take care of my mother at home and she's busy ninety-four, Jane, ninety-four. And so, you know, in the business, the other business, and I know, I'm special, so God bless you. One quick question, guys, because I do go on for a long time and I have my phone here. How much time do I get? Two hours?
Yeah.
Wait, twenty minutes? Okay, I'm gonna, because I'll tailor this to, to, to the time, because I could go on and on and on. But I'm not going to do that. Question to you guys. I know I'm listening to you guys speak, you know, when you're running for office. And it's a rhetorical question, but why are you guys sitting here? I'm gonna answer that, I think. In part, it's because I believe that it's not just a job for you guys. I think it's a love of your community and a love of your country. And so my question to you is about me, is why do you think someone, and you guys, Louise and I know each other. And Felix, I don't really know Tony as well, only in the roundtable discussions. So you guys don't necessarily know me, but I just need to let you know that, you know, starting in 2005, when I started the television, I've been thousands and thousands and thousands of hours with me. And I agree though, it's must to myself. And without advertising dollars. And it used to be that we were partnered with, you know, the paper. But that ended in 2013. So why do you think I would do something like that? And Gordon, same thing. I love this community. I love my country. I love Los Angeles County. And I made a decision and I realized when I started this that I had an effect. And so, I mean, I could go through, as I was writing this late last night, it was like, I should give you my whole history. And I could, that would take way too long, but just, I'm gonna go through things slightly briefly. My family came here November 4th, 1981, forty years ago. I first came to visit in January 1980, 1982, so it's going to be forty years through this next month. I spent the summer of eighty-two, eighty-three, and I moved here permanently in 1984. So this one's just get through.
It's amazing. We don't know each other better because I came in nineteen eighty-three.
Really? Yeah. I cross paths with a lot of people, but you know, if you don't interact. And Louise, I knew his father, I still have a file, he did some reports. And then what I remember about you is the restaurant we first had, that's when I first met him, started crossing paths with you. And Felix and I go back to the late nineties, early two thousands. And I have something here for you that I'll talk about a little bit later. I don't know if you guys are gonna recognize this guy, but let me see this, this.
I don't know where I gave you a copy.
Cooking with things?
Yes.
This is.
I could put it on you and go out.
There's, there's a copy.
It's going on YouTube soon.
That was with my martial arts instructor, Stevie Alonti, who is also a dear friend. And this is going to be on YouTube here soon. Frankly, I'd forgotten about it. But we had an accident at the inner home when we took down the roofs or the chimneys. And our computer room got filled up with soot, and so I had to clean it all out. And I found things, you know, you do this much video, you're gonna find things that you thought you had forgotten. And so I found all my cooking shows, and now they're gonna be on YouTube because we're making some changes. Anyway, in 1993, my father passed away rather quickly from colon cancer. And I made a promise to him that I would care for my mother. I still do that. And shortly after that he passed away, I went to Colorado Springs and met with a gentleman that was in charge of service corporation in a national swamp off inner home. And we had a conversation because I was currently thirty-something taking over. And a mutual friend of ours said, you should sit down and talk to him. Gave me all this advice, and being a juvenile director, he says, one thing that you should never do. Don't ever do this. Don't ever get involved in politics. So moving fast forward, in 2002, I jumped into the deep end of the pool. The city had passed a historic preservation ordinance. And they could literally find and imprison people if they were not in compliance. And at that same time, I was getting married, I was remodeling. Paul had major surgery to save her life and we were buying the newspaper. So it was quite an eventful year, but, but at that point, I attended the meeting. And they said, we're gonna leave it in place. And I went home. And I'm gonna use the person staying here, Dave, where I called me and says, you know, you can repeal that. We're like, what are you talking about? He says, I gotta just go get some signatures. We did, and we won. That was the birth of an activist. And then, and then in 2003, I had a situation where an honor card came to me after a funeral. They heard something that happened with the local institution. And I drew a line in the sand. And from that point on, it took me until 2012. And again, I became an activist. And I got a bill passed in 2012 with a Democrat Wes McKinnon and a Republican Kevin Grantum. And it was successful. I ran up to the Capitol probably twenty-five times. I was eight, three, or four in the morning. Three or four in the morning, pardon, five. Get there at eight or nine and with the people from Pablo. And then worked my way through, you know, elevator speeches, and it worked. But in 2004, Paul and I bought the paper in 2002. In 2004, I realized that I could start my own television channel, and I did. So in January 2005, I started my own television channel, local cable channel. And the first time that I was ever here was October 18th, 2005. And it was the first meeting, and after that, I just continued until, really until about 2019. The meeting was Tahoe and Dr. Sally Fattig. And I watched this again the other day as it went through. It was like, wow. I have been at the forefront of an awful lot of controversy, especially from 2005 to 2013. So in that time, starting in 2005, I started filming city, county, school board, ambulance district, Tahoe, health service district that we formed and I don't believe is still there. ARPA, I was the first person, I don't know if you guys know what ARPA is, Arkansas River Power Authority. I was the first person that showed up and started filming. ARPA started in, in, I don't know, the early 2000s or whatever. It was supposed to be a sixty-six million dollar project. And by the time it was done, it was a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars, and it's now torn down. And I was the first person to show up and start writing on it. Still have that film. They tried to keep me out. I had to call Harry Seren phone and say, Harry, they won't let me in the meeting. He said, you tell them this, this is some legal jargon about how if it's illegally constituted or it was formed by the government or whatever, he says, they have to allow you in. Because their attorney was in Phoenix, said, no, our meetings are private. And Harry says, you just tell them this, and it worked. So from 2005 to 2013, we were associated with the paper. And even when we shut down the paper, I decided that what I was doing was too valuable. But I've done that in my time and in my time, my downtime. And here in 2019, I pulled back because I needed to reorganize. There are some things that I've done that I'm really, really proud of in doing this. And number one, which started probably right after I filmed this, was the ambulance district. People don't know how critical it was and the shape that it was. And Candare Meehan had come back and said, Tom, I can't be at this meeting. And it was just after we started doing this because we're very close in the same week or whatever. He says, you need to go follow this and film it. And I did for several years. And from that, we had, we got a new director, we got a new board in 2018, and a new lobby passed. And I'll tell you, Alex Pele, who was on the board, told me, he said, Tom, if it wasn't for you, that never would have happened. And Michelle Minion, who was on the board, was afraid to be there. And she said, Tom. And she was calling me after her meeting to talk because she was afraid. I mean, it was hostile. I've been in some meetings where at City Hall, where I walked out, I had four people waiting for me. Just sat down, talked to them, because it's like, whatever. And nothing happened. But, but I would talk to Michelle briefly, and I'd tell Paula what was going on. And then she, you know, not being sexist, but they could talk longer. And I'd fill Paula in, and they would talk. And she felt very relieved, and it made a difference. So I know that what I've done has had an impact. And even, I was watching, as I pull up all my other video, back when I was filming the school board, they had a meeting about media, and Linda V. Hill said to Vic Myers, Vic Myers did not like this. And he said, you know, nobody watches that. Linda said, no, I make a difference. Whenever I go to Safeway, Walmart, people stop me and say, they watch the media. And so I know that I was having an impact. So I made the decision in 2019 to pull back because I had other things going on that I needed to sort out and finish. And those things are pretty much resolved now. And so I made the decision that I'm gonna form a nonprofit and make a 501(c)(3). The television channel itself is not going to be a nonprofit. I'm gonna have an arm of the television channel. It's gonna be a nonprofit production company. And that is what I put in your proposals. So that will allow me to do some things for government and nonprofits that for-profit companies couldn't do. And one thing that I did in 2018 that I'm also, just like Dan was extremely proud of, is Lloyd Holling came to me from the Stormont Park Department. Said, Tom, we can't find anybody. Could you produce a video for us? Well, I haven't really done any editing in several years because we were doing a cooking show and whatnot. And it's like, I suppose, but you know, the software changed and everything. But I sat down and I had to buy a program. I had to learn on the fly, really. Because they, when they, they change, they edit software, they move things around. And some buttons over here is over here, you don't know where it's at. So I had to learn on the fly, and I did this in a very short period of time. When it's all said and done, they went to Wilmington and they were awarded the grant. And they told me, they said, Tom, out of the seven people that did this, yours blew them away. One from a Western State just called in on the phone and says, hey, whatever, you know. And it wasn't true. But it was so critical that it had hit the time and everything that I had to literally go in and edit out rest. And we haven't edited it in a while. That's hard to do. So I was doing this on the fly. And when it was all said and done, they got the grant. But I talked to Lloyd last year, and I didn't know this. They were planning for five hundred thousand dollars. Do you know how much we got? Seven hundred and forty-two thousand. And they said it was mostly in part because of the video. So that's a huge contribution to what I've, you know, contributed to this community. Besides ambulance district and just being here and knowing that I make a positive impact. So presently, this last year, I had done some stuff for COVID. And then Comcast contacted me and they were changing out their, their equipment. They were going from analog to having all their stuff here to Denver, and it's gonna be digital. So I had a decision to make. Did I want to let the channel go or did I want to continue? It's gonna be expensive if I do this. The server itself that I had put in Denver is twenty thousand dollars. And I said, you know what? I think, I think I'm gonna go forward. And now Trinidad Times TV is gonna be on twenty-four seven on Comcast. Or on YouTube. Or looking at the possibility later, if everything is successful, that anybody that has a Roku TV, Roku has their own channels. And a little bit of luck into it, I think it's affordable so that we could be anywhere. Anybody that has a Roku channel would have Trinidad Times TV. So I understand that you guys are doing your own filming, and that's good. They've always captured the audio. But I think, the city hired me in 2018 to do theirs. And they're still doing their go-to meeting or Zoom, what they changed at one point. And they know that this is a good backup, and because people watch it. And a lot of people aren't gonna go on the computer and search for your, for your meetings to do this. And I think the most important group that I serve is the seniors. These seniors aren't gonna get on the computer and search, you know, for something. If they can turn on their TV, they're gonna do that. My channel has been a little bit stagnant for the last two months because I've got to do my program and I've got to learn this thing. But this week or next week, we're gonna be going twenty-four seven, and everything, all the meetings and everything will be on there. So that's, we've got YouTube, Comcast, potentially Roku. And I think that for the county, most importantly, and I could tell you the stories about how big of a conflict it is just to say, you know, we need to, we're doing it ourselves. But you need an independent source, and I've been doing that for all these years so that you're not influencing. And I've been doing that for all these years so that you're not influencing, or you don't know who's gonna be here in the future. Because there's, I've had some discussions with people here over some things that weren't right. And I admire you guys and trust you guys, but we don't know who's coming. And I've had situations, you know, I'm probably the least popular person, you know, when it comes to filming government. This government, people that are elected office don't want me there independently. It was so bad, the city even had a brief meeting and saying, we need to find something nicer and friendlier in the American times, that that's not our place. So I understand that some government officials don't like me, but I think that this is a valuable service, just like C-SPAN. And that's my model. C-SPAN is a nonprofit corporation, and that's what I'm breaking this into. And so it's important, too, that I'm never, and even when we had the paper, I would write and editorialize things, but I never used the television to editorialize or comment on what's happening in government. And I continue doing this from 2013 on, and I never have done that. I let people decide for themselves. I let them watch and make their own judgments. One of the biggest fans, one of my biggest fans was my mother. She didn't like Mrs. watching you guys so much, she liked watching the city council. Because she could see their faces. So what's in the future? Well, number one, this is a benefit to the community. And I said, I put in their gravestones, I put in at one point, you know, if we have the ability to help facilitate business, we should. And that's what I'm here approaching you guys about, is saying, you know what? If I were a for-profit business and saying, hey, sponsors, they'd kick me to the curb. But putting this in a C-SPAN model where we can be independent of you and not commenting on you, then it keeps an arm's length transaction that, you know, we're not gonna influence each other. And I think that's important. So the one thing I didn't do is put together a financial proposal this. I just wanted to find out, number one, if you guys are interested. If you're interested, I will put it together. And I can tell you that the city's paying me just under $22,000 a year. But they have way more meetings. I cover four or five other different meetings than them. And I can tell you the ballpark would be somewhere between $12,000 and $14,000. I was also working briefly with Denver Open Media. They were doing a lot of the governmental stuff in Denver. They lost their television channel, but they have a product that allows transcripts to be produced and for it to be searchable. And we were gonna do that, and we may go back to doing that. But Denver Open Media has lost quite a bit of their business. And I gotta make sure that that's in viable. If that's something that you guys wanna do, then we can do that. But I need to maybe find another source for that. So, but in the future now, Trinidad Times TV, I've started in the hall, I've done some samples. My goal, too, Felix, the college had a channel for a long time. In fact, one of the things that I did is I had interns helping me. But I started doing some of the sports, the soccer and the basketball and stuff like that. It's not full speed yet because there's a lot to do when you do sports. But I think one of the things that the channel can do that we are missing since the college let the channel go, or I don't, you may know more about that than I do, but this is a longer part of it. The college seems to think they put some of their sports and their stuff out on the web. But does anybody in town know when these things are going on or watch the games? So my plan is to further grow the television channel so that we're at the women's and men's basketball games and volleyball games and all that stuff so that people can turn it on if they're senior citizens. Oh, I know who that kid is, you know? And that will help grow this community. So that's the plan behind Tom, Trinidad Open Media. If you've got that there. We're gonna grow it.
Was it hard to come up with the art media?
Denver Open Media, and I was sitting there with my wife and accountant, and it's like, what should we name this? And they're like, it's right there. Trinidad Open Media. My goal, also, just like I did back in 2005, I don't know if you remember this kid's name, Casey Brown? Casey was one of our interns, did a lot of course, he's still in the business. He learned a lot, happened a lot from that kid.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Tom, when I was at the college, one of the things that Comcast, on those days, they provided the college, you know, public access check. And basically, we had ice and snow with as long as we wanted it. And then the TV studio was there.
Right.
So I didn't know what that started with, but...
That's actually one of the points that I began to tell you about. So when I made my decision to do this, Comcast tells me, and I said, well, you know, government has the ability to get their own channel. She said, not anymore, the laws have changed. And so one of the things that I didn't point out to you, you guys are gonna say, you know, I can, I'm trying to think of your objections, like, what we gotta put this up to? But no one else is gonna have another television channel. Comcast doesn't have to do it. They don't have to give it to you, they don't have to give it back to the college. They said, the laws have changed. Then I can give you the lady's name that I work with. She said, no, it's all different. So there's my 20 minutes, so I'm gonna try to wrap this up. So if you're objecting, I can say where you guys, like, what we're doing ourselves. Because I can go on and on, and I can tell you a number of those stories where it's great that you're doing that, but it's still, it would be wise, just as the city is doing, to do this independently. And secondly, on that Comcast issue, it has changed. And they're pretty much like, you know, if somebody wants to do it, they might consider it, but they don't have to. And since I'm already providing that service, they can say, we don't need to do it. And so I'm looking forward to going back to have a partner that's come to me that wants me to start doing interior services again. I think I can mention his name because he's the one who called me and said, well, this is a protection. So he's like, Tom, I want you to get going on this again. I mean, because I used to do, I just used to run on the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday. And I would do a Catholic service and a Protestant service and put on the meetings on, and then do a cooking show. And to wrap it up, two things. We are, your shows will be on YouTube. I've got them all, I'm loading them all. Actually, a couple of things. I have, as I said in there, history. I forgot that I pointed this out. I've watched this, there's some audio glitches because this is 16 years old now. What happens is history. And I wanna apply to Colorado, or whatever, maybe to you guys. Because it's gonna take a while to sit down with all these, but these should be preserved. Just as Glenn Altman or the photographer, this is video, and it's valuable. I'm also gonna put on, I did the 100th anniversary outside here with Jim, my, Jim, my toy, Jim Bee Hill, Gary Hill, I don't know if it was Mac or whoever. But I just remembered Gary Hill talking and saying, you know, I went back and I looked at the newspapers from 100 years ago. He says, you know, the only thing that's changed? The names. It was a really good celebration that they held out here, and I gotta put that on. And with that being said, I lost one, I'm trying to put it, but if you guys are interested, I would put together a financial proposal. I know you guys are in the budget, and I know budgets can be amended and adjusted or whatever. But I plan on being here for a long, long time. I've made an investment in my building that started 40 years ago. But probably more than $100 million between my father, you know, in the first 11 years, and then myself. And I don't plan on going anywhere because I have a bank of a lot of money, and they don't want me to go anywhere.
Oh, Tom, I think, the reason you asked how much time we can give you, to me, the time you've given this community is invaluable.
Thank you.
So the 20 minutes that you have today was probably not enough time for you. So thank you.
I could ramble on and on.
Thank you. But thank you for that. We have used your services, yourself and I went over some DA tape, yours too. And that came into be a valuable service for this board at the time. The services you provide are very valuable to the community. I just wanted to remind you, you mentioned beginning to trust this board and a lot of people in the community trust this board. That's because this board and our staff have very in-depth discussions on all the decisions we make, including this one. So it will allow us some time to have some discussion on this before we give you an answer today whether we want to do anything or not want, or have money, don't have money. I would like to have that opportunity to discuss that with our panel, with our staff. And then once we make that determination, then we probably have to go to a bit here, you're right. Unfortunately, this might be a sole source type of thing, like you did mention, who else is out there? So we will know that once we make that determination. That's okay with the board, our councilor and everyone else here, she's looking really careful what I say. But I think it is a valuable service, in my opinion. But I would like to give this opportunity for the board to discuss at our next board meeting. So it might be February before we get back to you, regardless of who's in the side wanting to form with this.
But I'm gonna start anyway. I mean, I'm not streaming today. I was, but I just hit the wrong button. So it's recording, but I'll put it up later. And I need to form a nonprofit. I did it with the city, but they're just paying me directly to the corporation because I held off on forming the nonprofit, and now I'm ready. We've had to resolve a lot of issues that still go back to the newspaper and things like that with friends of ours in government. And we're just, we have one last hurdle to do, and I'm ready.
As soon as you can get that done, maybe before the end of January, if possible, we will be discussing our nonprofit grants here at the meeting today. So make sure you listen to that.
Okay.
And that might be another funding source, if you were prepared to, if so, I would.
And this is a different topic, but I am now ready to, I've been saying this for a year and a half, two years, is for OPI, for the project that rebuilding the wall was part of. We started the outsides, and then I've got a third business, especially my fourth business.
$174,000 in there lending right now?
Is available. I think, yeah. Anyway, thank you. It serves a lot of, I gotta really, the least in 16 years, nobody's mother has just walked up and said, here. I mean, that was, that was beautiful.
She came to Denver this afternoon, so that probably was just not lucky.
It was history.
Thank you. And she operates this all, so that was a right. Yep, my mom filled it in, and there it stops.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
Tom, a couple of questions, 1214, did you estimate, how many meetings would that cover?
Sorry?
1214K, did you estimate?
That would be all of all your meetings. And what I needed to do, I did this, I have a spreadsheet on what the city does in approximation. And I just didn't have time to finish that for you guys, because I had to go back and look and tell you guys. And it'd also be meetings that you do outside here that you think are important for me to film. I have every meeting that the city and the county did jointly. It'd be kind of interesting, because I was at all those, and really what came on a lot of those meetings. But I will write it down if you guys are interested, as I did for the city. Because I did have minimum and maximum. Even, I did, I had four extra meetings in the cities, but I did five. You know, so it's not, it's not, it's hard to say, because you've had some meetings here, you know, back in the past that went on and on and on. Some of these can be, you know, three, four hours long. So I have to be very flexible. So I can't say, you know, it's gonna be 100 hours in this. It's like, if I look through all my years, it varies probably, you know, within a certain minimum and maximum.
And the second question is, how, is there a way to track viewership if you choose?
On Comcast, there is. And there's a core, like, with the city that watch. It says there's probably 30 to 40 or 50 people that are religious about it. And unlike one other entity here that says they have 10,000, you know, viewers, 10,000 people aren't gonna watch your meeting. You know, there's a core group of people, I mean, we have a couple of people here that are running, people, you know, aren't here. But on YouTube, yes, but on Comcast, no. But the anecdotal story I told you, and I could show you, I don't want you to put on YouTube, but I showed you to the hotel and Vic Myers, when he says, nobody watches it, says, oh, I've made a difference.
So YouTube, you would be able to give us viewership, and then what about Roku?
I, that's, I'm just explaining, I just found that I could do this a few months ago. And I just had some other things to do. But it means if you have Roku TV, you turn on it, you go to the part that's not cable or satellite or whatever. They have, you know, 1,000 channels there, and you can, and I can put it up there, so I can leave it there, so I can archive it if I understand this. So that's tentative. Like I said, I've explored it, but I need to look into it a little bit more. But the other thing that I wanna do is outdoor stuff. I mean, with people being able to go and doing some videos on what we're gonna be doing with the peak and on the lights and everything else, I mean, this could really grow into quite a thing. And the last thing I forgot to say was talking about Casey Brown. Because this is an opportunity, because where we have the newspaper office, I have space and everything, that we can bring in people just like Casey. This is something that kids should learn, because this is what people are doing today. They're doing video. A lot of them can do it on their own phone and whatnot. But if you really wanna get into the depth of editing and understanding full-length video and how to do audio and everything like editing, because I went to college and learned that from Ken Campion, who's one of the smartest people I've ever met, and Mike Sobago, and I forget who else taught the editing, but that's where I started.
You know, Tom, I think the opportunity, once you get to 501(c)(3), is to party for the schools.
Yeah.
As they begin to do the current enrollment, whilst they go into the ninth grade, they can actually start taking college courses. So I would recommend that you sit down with the college and see if there's an opportunity there, and then go to the superintendent. So you have the editors, and I think there's a program in the making. The program is no longer in there, multimedia graphics and audio and journalism. You can actually combine so many things. I'm just, my mind's taking me back, because I see that Trinidad State.
It was a great program.
Yeah.
I, you know, I was free something with these kids, and it's like, I'm like, doing here. But again, Ken Campion, well, he's a pretty good student. I mean, I can hear a mouse swatting across the floor, but I can't hear a tone. But at least I understood it as I'm doing the dials, kind of, these are what I should do. That guy just blew me away. He's kind of like your IT buddy, your agent who I've worked with on a video project. That isn't fair, that kid's too smart. Do you guys know him? Oh, my word. He saved my butt doing the sister mind being a thing for education in my string. I mean, what a good kid. Right? I mean, that's...
So you can't read or navigate it again, or a second can?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Really good.
That's, that's the goal. It is, it's from 2005 to whenever, it's like, I can start all over again. And now I know mistakes I've made and how to do this better.
And again, thank you for doing the all those years, we appreciate that.
I am finding treasures, absolute treasures of stuff I've forgotten. And again, I've forgotten how many accomplishments in the fall.
Yeah, should be a pleasure.
Thanks, Tom, that was a good show.
Anything else you'd start again?
No, sir, thank you.
Item G, consideration of OBCC number 6976, the share of Eric for $7.12. We're leaving this district to the House of Pity from the clerk's office, having concerns.
It is no, it's just a refund on an item that the customer had already sold that they accidentally renewed.
There are no questions for concern, enter data motion, please.
Motion to approve OBCC number 6976, the share of Eric for $7.12.
Second motion. Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner P. Solskine?
Commissioner Luiz?
Yes, I have P, consideration of OBCC number 6977, David Allen Dager for $7.20. I mean, Mr. Messis saying?
Yeah, the same thing, just a refund of the title fee that we have to cancel the application on.
No questions or concerns, enter data motion, please.
Move to approve OBCC number 6977 to David Allen Dager for $7.20.
Second motion. Commissioner P. Solskine?
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Luiz?
Yes, item F, consideration of resolution 21, number 45, increasing cap from 1,500 to 2,000. Well, Lector, Mr. Messis, are you here on that minute out today?
I am.
Wanna come up there and give a explanation?
So with the, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
So with the redistricting and reducing team, the standard amount would be, what, 1,500 per precinct? And that's with active voters. So what the state has made us aware that with board approval, we can go up to 2,000 precinct. Because of the physicalities of our county, we're so large and spread out. We're probably, in the perfect world, we, five precincts would be good. But because we're so spread out, and the way we're gonna have to do it, we'll probably go to seven or eight. But we need the capability to go up to 2,000 for precinct, certain precincts. So the state has notified us that as long as we have the board resolution to go up to 2,000, we can do that and refund precincts in a good way.
How many precincts do we currently?
We currently have 16, and mostly, everybody that, from the state level that's looked at that. We currently have sixteen, and mostly, everybody that, from the state level that's looked at that, just thought that was a big number for the, for the, I mean, we're a big county physically, but not population-wise. So the, really, from the inception, everybody thought that was kind of a high number. So.
So let me ask you, for the concept of communities east of Los Angeles County, I'm thinking of Kim and Branson.
Kim and Branson probably would end up being formed into one, most likely, in that area. And certain, certain areas may be in the outline areas. Example, maybe Weston, Highway twelve, and Cope Dale might be in one. Again, even with the board approval, it won't go over two thousand for precincts. So we've gotta, we've gotta work it out to where it does not go over two thousand.
And I think that the communities that are separated for them to go cast their votes, if somebody from, obviously, attend meetings, before combining Kim and Branson into San Francisco, that's where you are holding.
Right, like, you're thinking of like a caucus meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the logistics, so that, yeah, so that's why we can't just go down to five. Is that exact reason? Yeah, that's why it's gonna take seven or eight to do it.
And if the population grows, grows in the next ten years exponentially over that two thousand, or say, City of Trenax South, in certain districts in town, would that be able to be adjusted for resolution here for board commissioners?
I, you know, that I'd have to check on, I would say probably, yeah. That'd be something I'd have to look up, but for the most part, we're just reestablishing these new precincts. We need that maximum, because it, just some of the numbers we're looking at, we have some that are just pushing the two thousand, some might be over fifteen hundred, but not quite two thousand. It's kind of all over the place, again, because, just when we're talking about the physicality of the county.
Do you have a proposed map of the county, and how the districts are gonna be broken up?
Oh, no, that's all that works. Yeah, we don't have anything yet.
This is.
Or we can fulfill and keep them from geospatial, and geospatial.
So this would be step one of the process?
Right, right, right. Yeah, and she's got a lot of our information, I forwarded her a lot of the information, and she needed to help us with this. So for our part, yeah, we did need this in place so that we can really go forth to give her the correct information, so we can generate that, generate the map. Once we get to that part with ours, then it's kind of a little bit of tedious work, but we'll have to go in address by address, and we'll have the overlaps of the old maps, the new map versus overlapping the old, and we'll have to surgically remove some and put them in the other, it'll be an address by address thing, but.
Yeah, but the election's coming out, the election's coming out in twenty twenty-two, I mean, when, what will you have this ready?
Well, you know, we're working on that, we, over the next month or so, this is all going to take place. Yeah. Yeah, because we need it in place for caucuses, and first weekend in March, for both parties caucus, yeah.
Well.
I know, that's kind of a question, too, the, you know, both parties, you know, in years, had precinct captains and that kind of thing, but even if we lower that, they can maybe have co-captains, that kind of thing, to keep the same people involved if they want, so there's. We've had a few questions over the last short time period, but. So the establishing of two thousand active voter limit would certainly help us to do the job.
Is that happening, to your knowledge, in every county yet?
Yeah, most, a lot, yeah, it is, yeah, it is. I think several counties have already enacted that two thousand person limit, there's a few small ones that really don't need to, but, yeah, for the most part, I'm betting most counties are doing it, or have done.
And just as a reminder, all resolutions can be rescinded if the board sees to do so, if we have an issue moving forward with the population voter growth, so. There are no other questions for Mr. Messis, so please read the resolution.
Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, increasing precinct electors cap, resolution number twenty-one dash zero four five. Right, resorted to one dash five dash one zero one, print three, in, in the CRAS. Every county clerk record sent to approval, by the Board of County Commissioners, shall establish at least one precinct for fifteen hundred active eligible electors in the county at the time, in the most recent federal decennial census. And whereas, resorted to one dash five dash one zero three, excuse me, one zero one, print three, in, in the CRAS, sent to approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Clerk record may increase the maximum number of active eligible electors per precincts of fifteen hundred to two thousand, and whereas there are precincts in Los Angeles County, estimation numbers of active registered voters may exceed the fifteen hundred cap, and whereas, Los Angeles County Clerk Record Elections Division has requested the Board of County Commissioners move increases maximum number eligible electors per precincts in Los Angeles County from fifteen hundred to two thousand. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, following that one. Approval is hereby granted by the Board of County Commissioners for the Clerk Record to increase the maximum number of active eligible electors for each precincts in Los Angeles County from fifteen hundred to two thousand. On motion basis, second and affirmative vote, this resolution is adopted as twenty-first day of December twenty twenty-one by the Board of County Commissioners, Los Angeles County, Colorado, followed by your signature.
Thank you, Mr. York, and entertain a motion.
I would move resolution twenty-one dash zero four five, the precinct precinct count from fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Second motion. Commissioner P. Stolz? Commissioner Hess? Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Mr. Messis?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Item G, consideration of root or associates independent free improvement comparison of taxicube project improvement.
Commissioner, it's part of our comparison of taxicube project improvements. The FAA requires that our consultants, estimating fees that they'll be charging us to do the work on the taxicube, the bendonuts, et cetera, be looked at from an independent firm. The city's been a firm that we're recommending is rooting associates to do what they call independent fees, and so what they're doing is they'll check through our strong consultants, or consulting firms, to make sure that their fees and the charges for that work are recent. And there are certain companies within the FAA guidelines that are asked to do this type of work, and root is a lot of them. I also reached out to Sandec, they haven't responded as of today. Aviation, they can't work it into their schedule, they're so small right now. And also, if you ask the aviation planning group, their fee estimate is three to five hundred dollars, rooted associates is twenty-four hundred dollars. And I think there are also a specialized part, camera also specialized, specialized field, that will be certain engineering firms are eligible to perform this type of work. So I asked for approval, rooted associates estimate twenty-four hundred dollars for this independent fee estimate.
Did this group scout the element one? Element two being rehabilitates aircraft marketing? And element one, I mean, did they prioritize it that way, or how did it?
Commissioner, this is what the taxicube project is south of the town, and what Root will do is he'll look at each one of these, I guess, some common phases of that project, to make sure that our strong consultants, our consultants who's gonna be doing work, aren't gonna be overcharging us for those services, just to form the work needed on each of those phases.
So they haven't prioritized those phases, I mean?
No, sir, they haven't.
Okay. Because that, my opinion, is probably pertinent, because we're losing, we're losing aircraft to a bad tone because of the intro, you know, where it was, where the ground was chewed up, and it's tearing up the rocks and the windshields.
Yeah, this taxicube work will actually be from the runway south to the terminal, there's two taxis in and out, and then back to the, back out to the runway, plus these other elements that they've got, this is. This will actually take care of the approaches, and the hangers will take care of that in twenty twenty-two, is what our plan is.
Do we have the funding available? Any questions or concerns? Entertain a motion, please.
To approve the consideration of rooting associates independent fee estimates for comparison of taxicube project in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner P. Stolz?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. And finally, my favorite, discussion concerning nonprofit grant, and I'm gonna give this poorly, the debate, and build some issues to come up with here for our.
I put it together, I'm asking this day, did I miss anything? Are instructions, for applications, or we actually submitted? So, because it is for nonprofits only, we have a hundred twenty thousand that we're going to, however, I'm not too sure how you want to handle it. I collect them, submit them to you, and review them, so I'm not too sure how you want to handle it.
Well, I think we had a review committee last year for that, which included.
Like, since it's nonprofits, do you, do the commissioners want to review them?
Right. I think we speak on the, even the nonprofit, if you, we have enough within the county, elected officials, so we might invite them to meet.
Okay.
You might want to, you might want to either reach out to a community member, a nonprofit, to be part of the viewing committee.
I agree.
That would be my recommendation, and what your co-commissioners think.
I agree.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea, because a lot of officials, some of the community, may be a part of the debate.
Yeah, I understand. If we petition invite one nonprofit member, and others.
Yeah.
Well, it's a nonprofit, or just something for the community.
It's just something for the community, yeah, something really, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I get it.
And I think would be best for, for commissioners, my.
Basically, man, what this is, is taxpayers approved the excess funds for the one A sales tax a year ago.
Like how the city has marijuana funds for this?
So basically, we had an excess fund, and we had to ask taxpayers to keep and utilize, which they passed that. So last year, we gave out half a million dollars to all businesses for COVID relief, and another hundred twenty thousand to nonprofits, so six hundred twenty thousand plus dollars, and now last year. But indefinitely, in that allocation, this is forever, as long as sales tax revenue stay consistent, a hundred twenty thousand dollars is available annually from the Board of County Commissioners to all nonprofits. Nonprofits that are, follow the guidelines, which basically, they have to be compliant with their nonprofit status, incurred with that, and that is available to all the nonprofits. The only question I have, do we want to just do with the three C's, or all nonprofits by the one C's?
Okay, I can change it to whatever one, that's what this is here for.
Yeah, that's the only concern I have to board, because what's the difference for some of those, the C versus the three C?
Well, you know, they all have the nonprofit status.
Because I did say, usual organization IRS five oh one C three, non-for-profit, and I put yes or no, and then I put attach proof of non-proof, non-profit status. See, so even if they're not the five oh one C, they can attach proof of it.
Okay, that, that all nonprofits. Yeah, I think so.
Remove it.
The three C? I would say the three C, that's a nonprofit status, yeah.
I can take that note, but the proof of nonprofit status.
Yes.
On that, okay. And then is it okay that I'm asking for general support or project support, or do you want to eliminate that?
No, I think that would be great.
And it gives a little bit, and gives whoever you put together a little background of where the money's going.
Right.
That's a great idea.
And then I'm asking for, let's see, what is the instructions? A proposal summary, for them to propose.
Okay, great, or I'm gonna put it in my building, I'm gonna fix it.
And you're not really good, I'm going so far to the extent of doing a line item, and they're saying the board may call upon you to do a presentation once you're part of this committee. How did that impact your entity, your organization?
Possibly, we can even do what Tura did, and these grants that we have for their thought program, and the needs of the signs, to then to present in their building. Artistly funded from Los Angeles County, one A excess funds, nonprofit funds, we can get all the stickers for them to give it to put on the window, or something, you know, it's like, we made some signs for Tura, you know, that might be a little too gaudy, maybe just those signs as they walk into their business, or their church, or their their place, whoever's with the nonprofit, so I think that might be something the committee discusses, having a forum with that. Save maybe five hundred dollars to produce a little sticker or something.
Okay, that sounds great.
And do you have a list of those nonprofits, and how will the notification that the program?
So, well, to get a hold of them too, but it'd be very important to put that in the paper.
I'm gonna advertise it at the Chronicle.
We'll put an ad in the paper.
I'm gonna put the instructions on their town, or you can keep the application. I have a list of twenty-seven that we gave to you last year, I will email on them, the instructions and the applications, and we'll also put on our website and on Facebook.
Very good.
So we're gonna try to get out there as much as possible.
So my daughter's college nonprofit fund was just formulated last week.
Yeah, so I'm saying, anything else that you can think of that you're?
No, good job, and thank you guys for doing this again, and overseeing this, this is a great thing for the community, and again, thanks to taxpayers for voting for this and moving forward. Okay, any other discussion on that? Financial matters, consideration of building payroll for the first half of December twenty twenty-one, is it called?
Okay, the light goes off. So that's, okay, so payroll as of December fifteenth was one hundred sixty-six thousand nine seventy-nine and sixty-six cents. Any questions for payroll? Well, within this payroll, there's personal base payed out. Any employee that didn't use a personal base, they were paid out, so that's, so this payroll is a little higher than.
And the budgeting?
Looks like Paul as well. No questions on payroll? Bills paid on December first was twenty-one thousand six point eight and forty-eight cents. Bills paid on December eighth, ninety-one thousand nine twelve fifty-four cents. Bills paid on December fifteenth, seventy thousand four twenty and eleven cents. And that's it.
There are no questions to consider, entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve bills and payroll for first half of December two thousand twenty-one.
Second motion. Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner P. Stolz?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, and item B, provision all financials set in November twenty twenty-one, is spoken.
Oh, let's see, so that's a point I wrote for you, yeah. General funding on the surplus of six hundred eighty-seven thousand, you know, so we still have audit, everything, we said we go through, so hopefully, our profit will stay, because we got to have a few profits, we have a loss. Road and Bridge has a loss of six hundred eighty-two thousand, we're waiting for, they just approved the nine hundred thousand for the last grant that I submitted, they just approved, that's a lot, and it will become a, and they'll cover for that.
So that'll also put us on the positive front downs as well.
Correct, so I don't think he's had anything really big recently, but also depends on his accounts payable, that'll be accrued for, that'll happen in twenty twenty-two, that'll be booked back, because a lot of times, your bills come in late. Airport has a surplus of three hundred seventy-six thousand, it's hanging on, I know, it's nice to see that, even though it was transferred, it's nice to see that. Contingent has a surplus of ninety-five thousand, capital expenditure surplus of four hundred forty-seven thousand, it's because we haven't done our project yet. We're barely beginning now, but I will probably have to book that, some of the expenditures, since they started to shift. Lottery, profit of forty-two thousand. Field has a loss of a hundred seventy-eight thousand, but we transferred one million dollars. Let's see, LAF has a profit of one million one thousand six thirty-eight, and she can.